Things.
Young.
Yeah.
Because I got my agenda before it was revised. Listen, could you give me a new agenda?
Someone else.
You know, I mean, I was like, I know a thing.
Oh, is that one over there? That's. Yeah, I got my port packet up Friday before. All right, so we did. Okay, well, so.
I think so.
All right, you guys all set? Continue.
You guys ready?
You, anybody there? Okay, we'll continue this meeting, moving on to number four, approve the minutes from the April ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting. On favor. Leslie has. Excuse me. Well, we just started our meeting. Oh, let me move this chair away. Trying to hide behind the chairs. Okay. Five, approved and signed treasures warrant, number forty-four, so moved. On favor. Um.
I'm just gonna grab this one more time.
I had the old one.
She has the one before I. It's okay.
Yeah, we're all set. Um. Oh, I was looking for them. Um. Five, communications, Roger.
Well, we got thank you letters from Penquess and from Maine Bobsturman's Association, Lifeflight and New Hope for Women for the donations that we made. If anybody would like copies of those letters, I didn't make copies of them.
I'm all set. I'm all set. All the town.
And then the letter from Islesborough, did you want me to go on to that?
Um, that's, yeah, if you want, I mean, I've read this, um, read this packet that they sent along that I asked for, um. I don't, have you guys read the?
I haven't read it.
The lot of the letter? Well.
I have a problem with it too.
Yeah, I'm sure you do, but the thing that I've noticed most about it is that it's not asking us to, to do anything.
Right.
Um, but I don't disagree with it. Um, Sears Island is in conservation easement and the MAC point is, was built specifically for what they're talking about. So I don't.
That's right. My point was that this is an issue that is hostile to Vinyl Haven lobster.
It doesn't matter, it's gonna hang regardless whether we like it or not, right?
Yes, I took this as more of an FYI, not, uh, we want your input.
Um, so. I, what my concern is, we have no control over what the state finally wants to do about offshore wind. That is out of our hands.
Oh, yes, by all means.
What is, what my concern is, is reading the letter from the town of Islesborough is that their concern is about the fact that they wanna, um, they're afraid that they're gonna use Sears Island and build a port there instead of using MAC point, which is, was built specifically for that. And years ago, I don't know if you remember, if you were aware, where you didn't live here, that was a big fight over Sears Island. I mean, the state was, or whoever was pretty much decimating that area, that island. And this is a good, um, if you wanna read it, Marjorie copied it off of me and it's, it's informative and gives the history of the Sears Island and, um, I, I think we need to be very cautious about how they go about bringing the ships in and where they're gonna go.
I agree.
Certainly, that will affect the lobster industry because they're gonna be coming up through everybody's gear, but there again, that's, that's not what this is about.
Right.
But I think it's an issue that, uh, it is still a political issue and I'm not sure if it's done deal yet. It's certainly still in the discussion stage in many respects.
So you said you disagreed with the law?
Yeah, I said, no, no, I disagreed with the idea of the whole base for establishing offshore wind in Penobscot Bay.
Well, it's actually not gonna be in Penobscot Bay. If you look at where it's gonna be, it's gonna be quite well offshore. That was, the area that I saw last, it didn't look like it was gonna affect anybody's fishing from here especially. I don't know about other places.
Oh, and here it said a recently document that reinforced Isleboro Floodwood offshore wind facility to be built in Penobscot Bay.
The launching facility, that means on MAC point.
Right. I, I think the problem, the problem with having the turbines in the Gulf is that it's gonna ruin the bottom for the breeding and whatever, which is not the point of the letter, I know that.
That's right. We have nothing to do with what they're gonna do.
So are they looking for us to endorse MAC point with them?
We encourage you to review these documents and adopt, if you have not already, already done so, an affirmation.
Right.
Like the Islesborough Select Board's statement of May twenty twenty, uh, May twenty twenty-three. I don't know exactly, Marjorie, do you have any thought on what that might mean, an affirmation? I mean, I know what that means.
Just making a resolution.
Right, doesn't commit anybody to any. Doesn't commit the town to any.
But if you don't, if you don't believe what that, what they're saying, you shouldn't, you don't have to buy into it.
Right.
Yeah, I'd rather not buy into any of it. Yes.
You don't, you don't care where they put the, where they build the launching, the, um, launching facility?
I wish they hadn't built it at all, but if, if Islesborough thinks it should be on MAC point and not Sears Island, good luck trying to stop them.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I agree with them. I, I just don't see where.
What are we gonna do?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's just that they would like to get the other towns to have the same thought about Sears Island versus MAC point. That, that's what I capture out of it. Maybe we could, um, maybe I could call their town manager.
June.
Yeah, and talk with her, which I wouldn't mind doing, just to see what's going on over there in regards to that.
Yeah, I just might want a little more time than.
Oh, absolutely. No, I don't think we should do anything right now.
Okay, yeah.
It's just the, the discussion that I think we should start. Yes, but I definitely don't mind. Um, either their chair, the chair is probably the shade kind of the rice, it's a. But I, I can do that.
Yeah, just to see like, if they want them us.
The Gulfport Island Trust was at the forefront of saving Sears Island. And I received that same information as you did from the Land Trust. So Steve Miller is the executive director of that Land Trust. He always sends most of this information and is a very good person to, to get information from. I think all they want is for you to, to work with them to say, yes, we're, we're concerned, we would rather see that MAC point from Sears Island. I don't think they're asking you for any money or to do any specific thing. They just wanna know that we're, you're all working together within this community to make sure that things are done in the best way for our fishing community, inhabitants of these islands, to be in cooperation with each other. And I think, you know, my point of view is it's really important for us all to work together in this area because there could be big issues where we're gonna meet each other in the future.
I don't disagree with that. Thanks, Ellen. Okay, any more discussion on that? Well, so we can bring it back later. Okay. Um, seven, speakers from the floor. Seeing none, we'll go on to eight committee and departmental reports and appointments. Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, there was a, a motion. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, I wanna swing the home.
You can go home. I moved at the board vote to authorize town manager Marjorie Stratton to develop preliminary findings of fact and conclusions of law regarding the possible disciplinary action. Just discuss an executive session. The document containing these preliminary findings and conclusions shall be submitted to the boards at its next meeting for further discussion and executive session.
So there's been no conclusion?
That's the motion.
There's no conclusion.
That's the motion.
Okay.
Eight A, Woodard and Curran.
Uh, this is just their weekly status report. Um, escape on, no.
I don't see her.
Okay. Um, I know that she's very busy, so can't remember when we all talked last, but, um, if you, did we ever talk about the fact that we just received the one bid from Jake Barber? Okay.
Not since I've been.
Okay, uh, on the downtown project, the first phase on the EDA, um, phase one portion of the project, it came in way, way over budget. So as you can see in this report that, um, uh, Woodard and Curran met with JBI to go over the, um, bid items line by line and they'll continue to work with him to try to get to a place, um, where the, um, funders are happy, EDA, and, um, Jake Barber as a contractor is happy, uh, and try to come to, um, a place where we can move forward, uh, with that first phase of the project. We're also working on additional funding, um, to try to, um, um, you know, help move the project forward to add money to the EDA, uh, grant as well. So we're working in several different fronts just to try to, just try to move forward.
So what happened to? There was no agreement on any of that?
Well, we're still hopeful. Uh, Jake Barber is, you know, it's not a situation where he just bid high because he just didn't really wanna do it. He really wants the project, but he was the only bidder and it was very high. I mean, some of the things that were thrown out were that, uh, we could break the, uh, project into smaller pieces and bid it out separately. Um, but right now, uh, Woodard and Curran has been charged with working with them and going through some of the lines that really didn't make sense to them based on what they had estimated as cost. And frankly, when you look at it, it doesn't make sense to me either. You know, why would you bid this so much more in this category?
You know, so. And, and Jake agreed with, that he was bid high on some things because he didn't have necessarily the knowledge that he should have had about certain aspects of the job.
Okay.
Um, I think I can say one example was the move in the, um, electrical boxes in the, um, pump station down by the fire hall. He had it at this huge, what, a couple hundred thousand dollars when it should only be maybe twenty thousand, but he didn't understand and he didn't find, he didn't know that Hadstrom works out here and they work on things for the town and whatever. So, you know, a lot of things can be.
Yeah.
Um, talked about and brought down to a.
How long ago were the estimates generated on the cost? Is that two years, three years?
I don't remember exactly.
But I asked that question. I know what you're gonna ask and the answer was, too bad, so sad. You know, whatever went up, that's.
Well, no, things did go up, there's no question, but, uh, you, but I don't know the magnitude of the change and this, this sounds pretty beyond what one expect, would expect from a boyish.
It could be, you know, I mean, you're welcome to look at some of the documents that we have. I don't, I don't have anything with me tonight, but.
Um, I was just gonna say that a lot of the bid items that Jake put in were high and I think there were also some low points for sure from the, um, engineers. However, if you look at it and the conversations that we've been involved with, I feel pretty confident that you should be able to bring it down quite a substantial amount. And, um, if we can get that done within what was it, the next month or so, um, there's still been around starting this up in the fall, in the fall, so.
Yeah, Jake definitely wants to start it as well. But. Just, okay, just renegotiate some of those good prices.
It happens a lot.
Yeah.
Any other questions about, um, the downtown project?
C, Public Works. Nelson?
Yes, um, you know, um, Marjorie said that you guys, the week that I was not here for the meeting, um, that there was, that the, uh, brought up the excavator versus the lease, the own versus the rental. Um, and I sent out, um, a proposal for you folks to look at. About that we can have a conversation about it.
So the point of this is that, um, it's a much different article for town meeting if it's going to be a lease purchase because I, it's, it's a, a four year, basically a four year loan. It's a four year commitment. So the article that I take to town meeting has to be written differently. So I really need to know, um, whether the budget line is just, you know, part of our operating costs or if it's going to be this four year commitment, which is really a loan. So it's a, it's just, um, it has to be approved separately at town meeting. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wanted to make that clear.
Um, and with the lease versus the rental, you're looking at a thousand dollars difference to have it for the entire year versus having it for four, five, six months if we're lucky. And then we have to play with, um, rain, so on and so forth. So running it every single day is not an absolute option, um, especially the way the rains have been the last few summers. So, um, having one a year round, like this winter, there was, there was on a probably three weeks of frozen ground. Rest of the time we could have been off working and doing stuff with that and breaking wedge and making ditches and clearing sidewalks and so on. And, um, they just don't have the use out of it as we should by renting our own year. It's been something that we've needed for a long time and I think there's been a lot of discussion about it for a long time, so.
I have a question. Um, when, when are the biggest busiest months for you to, for the crew to have an excavator? I mean, there must be a couple of, you know, you're not use, might not need it twelve months a year, correct?
Well, I don't think it's gonna run like every single day, twelve months out of the year, no. But like this winter, for instance, that, um, January probably would have been the only month that it would have sat. Other than that, we could have been using it with, with the way the weather's changed.
I, I know at certain times an excavator is way, you know, easier than a backhoe. Well, like, what would, there's nothing that you couldn't do with this that you couldn't do with the backhoe. And then that's just another piece of equipment that we have to maintain. Yeah, it's a thousand dollars cheaper per year to buy, but hoses are gonna blow. That's just standard with any equipment. Things are gonna break on it. Then you start talking about that and it's more than a thousand dollars a year.
It's under warranty, but it's under lease, other than hoses that get broken by us, but somebody's coming, I'll have it. But it's not, I don't, I disagree with the fact that the backhoe can do everything the excavator can do, it just can't.
Well, for decades and decades, they never had an excavator and were able to do the ditching and do things with a backhoe. You, you can do ditching with a backhoe, it's slower, but it can be done.
Waves slower and you don't come with the, with the outcome as you do with an excavator. It's a lot slower and to me, I've got, I mean, we can sit twenty-four seven on the side of the road and move every two minutes for traffic, you know, or we can get it done and move on something else that we need to do.
Of the six months that, that you would have the lease, what would be the most advantageous time for the town to lease? I mean, what months would be the?
Well, right now, um, I'd like to have it right now, but I don't because we don't, we've got the, the, um, front end of the Western South going, transfer case and, and so on and so forth. So that's torn apart in my garage right now. So I have nothing to tow the rental with. Um, so I haven't gotten it yet, but I usually don't get it until the end of May because I only have a certain amount of time. So I wanna make sure that it's warm and clear weather.
Right, so that.
Last year didn't work at all for us.
So you would say from June through the end of the year would be the best? Okay.
Can you get a lease, a lease for six months or at least a year?
We're doing a rental.
Let nobody talk about the lease to buy. That's a, that's, that's not a six month period. Either have it or you don't.
Lease to buy is four years at a set price. Um, it's like twenty-eight thousand a year.
Twenty-nine, yeah.
Twenty-nine, that's twenty-seven, five, it's a rent, yellow one. Um, but so for the twenty, twenty-nine thousand a year, um, at the end of the four years, first it's under warranty for the four years. And at the end of the four years, you can either A, turn it in and get a new one, or you can keep it at all. I mean, I know lease to, lease to purchase isn't something that we like to do on time, but, I mean, you know, the back, the, the excavator also has, you can rent so many attachments, you know, for a week here or a month there to do extra work with.
So that's gonna be an article on that town meeting, correct?
If, if we vote to have the rent to lease.
Okay.
Um, but, um, it's gonna ask. So I think another thought I had was, you know, where, where do you keep a piece of equipment that it's undercover for? You know, I assume you'd have to, if we own something, where would you keep it?
Well, um, the backhoe's new job, new location might be down in Saltshut.
In the Saltshut?
Um, and, um, right now, as soon as that Western Star is put back together, I'm kicking it out, but I've had enough of it.
But it likes it being.
One question I would have though on this is, we're talking twenty-nine thousand a year for the, for the lease of it. How much are we spending, uh, contracting with the local excavator people? How much are we spending per year on that?
Well, I can tell you that.
Saw the rates, but I'm, I'm talking about.
You saw the rates. Well, normally we, um, we've put in money, but I looked today actually back, history back as far as nineteen ninety-three, we paid out twenty-three thousand dollars for, um, services for excavators and such, um, for our year. So, and it's been, I mean, we look at ten, ten, fourteen thousand, like Polly Pond. I, I don't think we've got the bill yet for around the island road, um, for that culvert for emergency repair. Um, but I know last year we paid, we paid what? Trying to think what the amount was that we paid for the culverts, all the culverts that, um, we put in half around the island road and then the other half was given by, um, Jake. I mean, that was costly.
Yeah, they've been like, I got that.
I don't, I would have to pull the numbers.
Um.
Yeah, for those who tell me about the town to say.
I have to ask another question about the Western Star. What's going on with that rig? That thing breaks down every other day, seems.
That's why it's on the list.
So, so that's, we're talking like a great deal of money to buy, if we're gonna need a truck.
I'm not buying another fuck ass size.
Well, that's beside the point. Still gonna, but you're still gonna have to have a new truck.
Eventually, yeah.
And it's gonna be approximately, how much do you think it could be?
Um, a hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, and then we're talking, how many thousands for excavator? I don't know. Um, we have an awful lot going. An awful lot going on here.
I agree with you, Pam, on that.
You know, there, there hasn't been a lot of maintenance in the past, which there is now. We have a maintenance program.
Right.
We keep everything clean. We keep it salt free. We keep it.
And I truly appreciate that because I know you do the, what you can and you're doing a great job. I, I feel you're doing a great job. My concern is, another concern I have is if you decide at some point in the next five, six, I mean, you wanted to retire, take early retirement. Yeah, yeah, not my, right, not going up. You know what? The next person coming in might not have the same work ethic, which would be sad, but you know, they might not look at maintenance and on vehicles quite the same way as what you do.
Won't anywhere right away unless you guys come and have.
No, 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 I didn't mean it that way, but you know my point. You get my point, right, Melly?
I, I do get your point, but you know, I can't, I can't worry about what's gonna happen after. I need to worry about how I'm gonna get.
I don't, I know, I realize that, but we're talking about a lot of money here. And I personally, I think I would vote for, to just, let's keep the, a leased one for at least this year.
A rented.
A rented.
A rented, I mean, I get the two, I mean, rented and leased, whatever.
Have to hunt around for a smaller one.
Well, maybe the rest, I mean, I'm just one person here. We've got four other, uh, three other people. Tom's not here, but we have three other folks that might disagree with my, how I feel.
I know, I go with just renting.
Yeah, I think for, for this year, we've got a lot on our plate and I think it's good, don't get me wrong, but I think I'd wait another year and, and go ahead and we need an excavator, we work with the locals.
And, and there's a reserve that I don't know how much is in the reserve.
Uh, well, there's only eighteen thousand left, but we're putting another hundred thousand in the equipment reserve. We're estimating at least a hundred and thirty thousand for a new truck.
I think, why can't, why can't it go to town meeting and what, to have the town decide?
Cause we have to say if we want it to be rented or leased.
Right.
So do you want, if you have, you would like to vote for the lease, then that would go to town meeting.
Right.
But if we, us three want to rent for six, the six months rental, then that's what it would be. Am I correct in that? Okay, so do you wanna make a, a vote on that? Make a motion? Do we have to make a motion?
It's just gonna be part of the budget. I need to, I needed to know because.
Our consensus.
Right now, it's in the budget as a rental and if it was going to, um, you know, if we were going with the option of the lease purchase, as I said, the warrant article would be very much, very different.
Right.
So I, I needed to know which way we were gonna go.
Okay, so I think at this point, the consensus is that we would, um, go with the rental.
And I disagree. I think it should be lease on, and on the town, for town meeting, for the town to decide.
No, if you, uh, if, how much time do you think you're gonna need to, say you need a smaller unit?
I can't tell, I have nothing to tow this one, the one that we rent, that's already, see, I have nothing to run. I mean, even our, our trailer needs a new deck, so.
So a new, brand new one is gonna get itself around by itself?
No, but the new one and the size that we chose with a ten thousand dollar, um, depth with it, of, um, trailer can be towed by any of the trucks in our fleet.
Could it tow the rental if we had the trailer?
When is the truck gonna be fixed?
Good question. I don't, I don't know. I'm trying to, trying to figure out parts right now and what it needs.
Well, when do you need this piece of equipment? Well, when do you need this piece of equipment by? Like yesterday? So if it goes to town meeting and it doesn't pass, then what are you gonna do?
I still have money in the budget for, for something, but I just was gonna wait and do some catch up over the fall and winter.
They wanna buy, buy one? And if it doesn't pass and she's. Be the end of July before she gets the rental, so whatever, I don't care. Whatever you guys wanna do.
Well, the one she has now, she can't take anywhere because the truck is broken.
I'm confused. The one we don't have an excavator right now.
You don't wanna make the decision, I'm assuming.
I have to set it up here in advance in order to.
You don't wanna make the decision.
No, I I think the town should vote on it. A lease, a lease to buy that can be towed by every truck that they have.
And no CDL license.
And no CDL license required. Good, but I feel like I'm alone in this, but that's fine. Yes, it is.
I propose we put this off for next meeting and try to get a little more data and get a better idea what you can and can't do with the truck that can tow this down and go from there. Well, the the big truck that you have, that you could tow it to Eastern Style, so.
Western.
Western Style, whatever. And is another two weeks gonna make a difference to you on this?
No, I mean, I can't do it until June anyway.
I would like, I would just like more information about the truck repair though, what, what exactly you.
Uh, what, what looking for parts for it right now, and I'm trying to not go from like O'Conners and get brand new stuff because the trucks.
Not brand new.
Not brand new, but um I'm, it's a four wheel drive truck. We haven't used the four wheel drive in it forever, which is probably why the transfer case is shod. Um, so I'm looking for a front axle, a new front axle. Um, it'll need new brake drums regardless. Um, but a new front axle without the transfer case option, take the four wheel drive right out of it. Run with chains in the winter.
Um, well, I, maybe Dawn has a point. If you come back and let us know about the truck and the repair, the cost of the repair of the truck too. Um, that would be helpful. And if you, and if you didn't repair the truck, if you did get the lease to buy, what will happen to this truck? Will that just go sit there and?
No, it's, I mean.
You're still gonna fix the truck, right?
Not gonna happen overnight.
Okay, um, well, I would just assume, I would like to know the cost of the repair of the Western Stock. If you could do that, and then in two weeks, we can resume our discussion. Does that sound like a plan?
Yep.
And.
Melly, do you have anything else on your report? No, I just wanted to know if you've had any more uh that you wanted to discuss. Um, you sent a report.
I sent a report to help out.
Anybody?
I like the reports. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hopefully you're looking at it.
Yep.
Yep.
And and what about this um, this project out at um, I don't know, what are we calling this?
Something with the culvert. At the Grange Hall.
Yes. Is that something that the selectmen are are prepared to move forward with? I mean, I've been asked to try to get some permitting, but it's, you know, it's a long cumbersome process to do Army Corps permits, Department of Marine Resources and DEP permits for something that um, you know, we don't even, I don't think DEP will accept it as a project, but um, is this something that the full board wants us to move forward with? Putting some rocks in to the um, what you call that area?
The Grange Hall culvert.
Yeah. Putting some rocks and vinyl coat to try to slow the tide down.
If if you have to go through all that process of getting permits and whatnot for the design, they're not gonna accept that.
I'm not gonna disagree on this one. We're looking at probably, if we look at what the engineers come back with, we're looking at almost a two million dollar project. I think that we can do, solve this problem if we, if they allow us to do it, for probably under fifty thousand. I think it's worth spending some time to research it and make sure that we know what we're talking about before we say, no, we can't do it.
Well, you're gonna have to have a design that they're not, they're not gonna accept what you submitted.
I don't know that. You don't know that.
Well, I know what we're going through trying to get um a grant for updating the playground and it's, you don't just do that. You have to have an extensive, um, you have to have a design. You have to have a design. You don't just.
Well, the point that uh, I mean, I've gotten to the point where I don't wanna spend hours and hours on these permit applications if it's not something that the board supports. I, what I wanna know is, does this board support this? And if you don't, I'm not, I'm not gonna spend hours and hours on these permit applications.
I don't, I don't disagree with the premise. I disagree with what the process you're trying to go through because that is not gonna be acceptable. That will, I know it won't. I can almost guarantee.
Part of the reason we talked to the, about earlier was having the engineers actually go ahead and develop the application for the permit, because you're right, none of us have done it. So I have no problem with them doing the application. I don't wanna say, well, it's too complicated, take too much time because I think it's the way to go and we're talking, you know, millions of dollars in the difference.
I mean, those DEP plans are the same ones you get for for a dock or a war and those, the design plans in those are not much more extensive than 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 this. Um, I, I mean, I think we either that or we need to ask the engineer or say we want more plan along these lines and have them draw.
Yep.
So you want me to ask them for a work order? They're not gonna do it for free.
Well, they don't do anything for free.
Right.
Well, nobody does.
So you want.
Some chat more than others.
Does the board want me to ask them for a work order to do that?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, we, we would like to see the plans for.
They would like to see something different than the gate that they proposed, and I don't, and I don't blame you guys for that. I I agree. That was kind of a sketchy.
Yeah, it was.
Saying, I mean, I shouldn't say sketchy, but they never came back to us with other applications that.
They gave us one option. It's the most convoluted one that could possibly be.
And it was like eight hundred thousand dollars to do it. There was no guarantee of it was gonna work.
I think that if we could have them come up with a design that seems to be more in keeping what was there before, you know, if the DEP would approve something like that, I absolutely agree. Let's go for it. But I don't disagree with Marjorie saying that she's not gonna spend hours on these permits.
No, we, that wasn't the intent. The intent was to have the engineers develop based on this proposal as opposed to what they had before.
Was this in your packet?
The only other thing I have is that we're still talking with Northeast Paving and the um Corey Nutting was supposed to get some figures together for me for around the island road, so we're still working on that. I don't know if you've heard anything else.
I did talk, I talked to Steve today about the um street sweeping and he was in the street sweeping. He was talking to me. I'm getting closer. I'm getting closer to you. And um, but I don't know if he's driving the street sweepers from like Millinock getting all the way down. He wouldn't, he told me it's soon. He just, he won't give me, which he, this is how he is. He won't give me a firm date until about ten days if we're lucky before. Because every, he has a straight schedule and if it rains a day, it sets him back a day. So, but he's on his way.
Is that the same guy? Does he's, oh, have the thing to suck out the catch basins too?
He does. He's gonna do those in the fall. He said he couldn't do them this one, this spring, but that's the way. Yeah, yeah. So they're gonna be, we'll have him back in the fall to do that.
Yep.
And he's gonna be using a different truck.
Okay.
Can I, um, Madam Chair, can I back up to the downtown project?
Please do.
Um, I just wanted to discuss briefly, I don't know, in your packet, we had the um memorandum of understanding.
Oh, yeah.
It isn't that, right?
Yes.
So that is between, the memorandum of understanding between the Water District and the town to move forward with um building the new building for the Water District and moving them away from the uh so-called net factory site.
Right.
And uh we just wanted you to give that a look and see if you've had any um thoughts or objections. But we can, if you would please look that over and we can put it on the next agenda for approval. Is, would that be all right with you? Is that good?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, on the last page where Pam has to sign, can you fix her last name?
We can.
Laura's gonna fix it.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, sorry, thank you.
Great, um, new business. Knox County Sheriff's Contract Housing Allowance.
So this is the contract that um Knox County sent to me. Well, it's actually for twenty twenty four, what half of twenty twenty four is already gone. The big change is the housing cap on page two where it changes the cap from twelve thousand to twenty one thousand, which is eighteen hundred a month instead of a thousand a month.
That was brought on by what? That's a pretty, pretty good jump and I'm just here, it's just a real, that just realization where we are.
Uh, maybe Paul or Kirk could answer that question. It's, it's the figure that they put in. I I didn't come up with it.
They are, I don't know if they're.
Paul, do you wanna hear that one?
You there?
Uh, Pat, Pat Polkey and Paul.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, Pam, this is Kirk. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Hi.
Uh, just excuse us, we're traveling back from training and um with the sheriff right now. We didn't wanna get too much into the negotiating parts of the contract as we really wanna negotiate in a public meeting, but I mean, to talk in generalities with the housing situation as it is nationwide, uh, the thought was to make some changes to that. Uh, we did do some research as far as the federal government recommends twenty one thousand, uh, twenty one hundred a month for a single person and twenty four hundred a month for a family for housing allowance for the Rockland Maine area. So we obviously, uh, again, not to talk about details about it, but we are significantly under that figure, obviously, uh, not to really talk about negotiations again in a public meeting, but I mean, I think that's really the only major change.
And that's not necessarily what we would pay. This, that's basically the max that we're looking at.
Up, up to whatever figure.
Yeah, up to, yeah, okay.
Put whatever you want in in that. It's always going to be up to whatever figure that we agree to.
Okay, sounds good. I understand now.
So.
That's the only change in the contract.
It's that amount.
Um, and again, from my perspective, this is a public document. I don't, I don't get the secrecy, but anyway.
I wasn't trying to negotiate, just trying to understand.
Is everyone?
I said, I wasn't trying to negotiate, just understand.
Go ahead, Kirk.
No, that's, that's just the thought process that the housing has gone, gone up so much, we're just trying to keep up with it and we're not even keeping, keeping up with it with with what we're proposing, but.
Yeah, well, I think that seems reasonable amount to me.
Yeah.
Did you have a chance to look at the other parts of the contract? I mean, that's really the only change.
Right.
Are you happy with the rest of it?
I read through the whole thing. I didn't see anything there.
And then the names at the end.
Right.
Names have changed to protect the innocent?
Well, it still has Jake and Dawn on there.
Yeah. All right, yeah, I think we're all set. Okay, um, was there something else? Just says, um, number one. A Knox County one housing allowance. Was there something further or?
I don't know. Are there any other discussions about housing?
Nothing about housing, but we are here for another lease involved.
So, did you, did you wanted to ask, did you have something you wanted to say?
We were, we've been talking about maybe coming up with an idea for towing. Cause we're running into problems with getting things towed and a place to put things that we need to.
Could you speak up just a little bit?
So we're, we're having problems with towing, uh, and finding a good reasonable, like tow that we can call whenever. Um, and then also a place to put vehicles if we have to tow them. Um, so we have just been talking about that and I was hoping to meet with you at some point so we can discuss it a little further.
Um, what, what's going on down back at Peaslee's? Peaslee's.
We could certainly use that, but I think um what we kinda wanted to do was, was um sit down with maybe a couple of board members and and discuss a plan and put something to bring back here to vote to make sure that everything's
Okay.
done the right way. So we were hoping maybe to get um a couple of select board volunteers to sit down, the deputies, myself and and maybe Marjorie and discuss. I mean, it's been a long time since we've actually had deputies out here and there's all actual, quite a bit to discuss.
I'm gonna be here Thursday.
All day.
Thank you for the reminder. Um, I can come in. Are you, do you, are you gonna be around Thursday morning? At Marjorie, do you have, we have, uh, you aren't available after two PM, but we could meet before the uh Water District meeting starts at ten thirty. We could, what's it gonna take? Maybe a half hour at most?
Yeah.
Like if we came here at ten and talked about it then Thursday morning, would that work for you guys?
This Thursday?
Day after, day after tomorrow.
I could come in.
There was something else that came up.
So, ten, one more.
I could make that work.
Okay, so sewer is at twelve, okay.
Ten thirty and twelve.
And the eight o'clock Water District Downtown Project, that was canceled, right?
Right.
Okay, yep, oh, yeah, I'm all set. Ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock Thursday morning.
And Pam and Leslie?
Yeah, I can make that work. You put it, a reminder in, cause I will forget.
Alrighty, great.
We're trying to call this a committee.
No, it's not. It's no more.
No, we don't need any more committees. The towing crew. Okay, great, thanks. Okay, moving on to B quickly indeed.
Uh, so the Beckmans paid up everything that they owed, so.
I agree.
I don't know if you recall the discussion we had about the foreclosure, but uh they've paid in full on their taxes and their sewer fees, so. We're gonna, we're just gonna do a quick claim D and.
Yep.
Instead of trying to discharge each lien that they have, uh, that's been recorded.
But it's paid in full, so.
Paid in full.
C, high requests for parking lot use.
We would, hi.
Hey.
We would love to um host a contranet on Sunday, August eleventh. Uh, we would need just half the parking lot. Corner, or the dot, no, it's side. Um, so on five to eight.
So you don't, do you close it off?
Yeah, we have it sectioned off.
Yeah. And you don't.
Park would still be able to go through and there would still be the other half to.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You just want that back corner.
Yeah, and it's a Sunday, so we figured it would be fairly quiet downtown.
Right, yes.
Uh, I don't have any objection, I just wanted to remind you that Rampage is the following Saturday.
Right.
The Sunday on summer time.
Sunday and then Rampage is the next Saturday, so it would be the Sunday before.
Um, but I don't see any. Pause for concern there, except it's too bad both events are so close together, isn't it? Yeah.
But Sunday.
Okay, um, yeah, I guess we, yes.
I approve.
Yes, please.
Motion to approve the dance on Sunday for Pi, August eleventh, second.
From five to eight, okay, all in favor? You're welcome. Prove list of election clerks.
Um, this just is as a, you know, formality, formality. To approve these election clerks. I think it's like every two, two years. You just have to approve the list.
Twenty four, twenty seven.
Yep.
I don't approve any of them, no. I second that.
The pool that we pick from for um election clerks and ballot counters.
I make a motion that we approve the list of election clerks.
Second.
All in favor? Let's see another piece of that, okay. Nine F uh warrant.
Well, there's the S A D budget validation.
Oh, I'm sorry, I already put that off.
I have those.
So this is the school um budget referendum warrant, there's.
Nine.
Nine copies that you have to sign.
And we sign in the same spot on each of the nine.
Certainly will.
It's passed them in different orders.
Just to mess with them. I hope Valentino.
We're gonna mess them all up.
I doubt very much.
Have you, while you're signing that, has everybody met Jared Austin? The new, new, the new, new deputy?
No, hi Jared. How are you? Good to see ya. Oh, and are you liking Final Haven?
I am.
And how are Rebecca liking it?
Uh, she came out this weekend, she loved it, yeah.
Oh, good, yeah, and then make sure you sign all of them. There's Gabe. Hey, what did you spend, Gabe?
Just about four, but, no, we're gonna sign.
Gabe, you're late to the party. Yeah.
I know. Sorry.
We're having so much fun over here, you know?
No doubt.
You didn't bring your stamp with you?
I have, I have some too, they're all Halloween stamps.
When is the school district meeting?
Wednesday, the eighth.
So Wednesday, the eighth, the selectmen are signing the um school budget meeting warrant. So, all you peoples out there, the school budget meeting is six P M on May eighth. Six P M on May eighth, it's a Wednesday.
Alrighty. There we go, alright, so.
Annual town meeting election warrant.
Yes. F.
Last one, John. I don't know, it could be tough.
This is the annual town election warrant.
That is on June eleventh. We have a um election for two selectmen and two school board members.
And one water district.
Oh, yeah, remind me to get that Thursday morning. From Dolly's desk.
Didn't think it was out again.
I'm gonna put it right in the margins here.
Oh, good, thank you.
Pam, on Thursday. Hope I can remember what that's gonna mean.
Yeah, you would know. Your weight, your fame works way better than mom.
I don't know.
Ten, old business.
Uh, what about, oh, okay.
Special town meeting warrant, purchase of residential property. Thank you, you're welcome. This is just. And we're up to ten B. Uh, main state ferry service issues.
They're getting better and better.
Marjorie?
Um, I didn't, uh, I don't. You and Lad wanted it on the agenda, got me to just.
Well, Lad had asked, yeah.
So, um, I, I did get a, a email from Bill Gary. Saying that uh we should know more by the end of the week, but the um. The Smith is ready for its Coast Guard inspection. And we're hoping that that will be the end of this week, no guarantees. Um, so when the Smith goes back to Alsboro, we will get the spear back. Um, and then he also talked about how they were hiring six additional A Bs. And one of their problems is that they have two members of one crew that are out with medicals. And. Overall, they have five A B Seamen crew members out, I don't know what FM is. FM, FM or L O A. So that's just information that I've gotten from Bill Gary to try to explain the disruptions and the hope. That the Smith will be done, I'll, he said that he would know more by the end of this week. Uh, so hoping that either the Smith would just be done and we'll get the spear back. Or I'll get more information at the end of this week, so that's the information I have.
Lad, did you wanna have any this more discussion?
I mean, I think we need to keep pushing them. I don't, I don't think the, the spear comes back and this. Magic, you know. Yeah, it all magically gets better, um, I still don't. Know if this, you know, they gotta try to hire these six people, but where are these six people coming from? You know, have they actually hired anyone? Obviously intend to hire.
Yeah, the sen, the sentence is, we are currently hiring for six additional more. So it sounds like it's just in the process, is that how you would take that sentence? We are currently hiring for six additional more.
Very nebulous, I mean, that, to me, that sounds like they want to hire.
Yeah.
They just, uh, no, they didn't say we have hired.
Right.
Six more.
It'd be nice to have the spear back, but until they get their manpower and their control, they can't staff the Libby, they're gonna have a difficult time staffing the spear.
My, my question is. Crew shortage now, but that has not been the case up until about two weeks ago, it's been crucial, because. It seems to me that it's been a lack of proper. No, it's been a lack of, of scheduling.
Scheduling.
They're not, they're not following, you know, they, they know, like, the Coast Guard coming here and doing their inspections. You know, when they had a port captain, and the port captain knew, and made sure that everything was taken care of, so there were no interruptions in service. Now, we don't have that port captain, and there's, is every day. It was interruptions of service, because this one broke down, that one had to have an inspection, this one had to have an inspection, that one needs to go to Matenakis. This is, is poor scheduling in my mind, that's how I see it, and I don't care if they hire ten more. A Bs or deckhands, they're, they still need a certain amount of A Bs versus deckhands in order to run the boat. Which Vlad probably can tell more about that than I can, but, I mean, I, I.
No, that's, that's correct, that's what I mean by we need to keep pressuring them is, you know. A lot of these times that these issues have come up. It's not so much a crew shortage as a mismanagement of crew, and they've had guys that could come in. And they don't, they don't line it up, um, or, you know. Yeah, sometimes people get hurt at last minute, but some of these are not last minute, um, they're known shortages. Um, and I, I think we need to go much higher up in the D O T. Um, so it starts coming back down is the only way that that's ever gonna get fixed. Cause it's, I mean, a fairly night and day difference from when they got rid of the port captain to now.
And they get a bunch of new people in there that really have not experienced.
Yeah.
I found it interesting, on Friday, they had enough people to, to crew the Matenakis trips. But as soon as they were done and it was time for Final Haven to have the two forty five out of Rockland, it's canceled, cause they didn't have enough crew. So. I, it just, it makes no sense to me whatsoever, and then the Libby was out on Monday. And they got the transporter to make the runs, which isn't ideal, but they still got their run, you know, I.
You ever been on the transporter?
No, but I will not go on that.
I've been on there, with water coming down the deck, about a foot thick.
Proud enough to go on the Libby, I would never go on the transporter. I'm just saying that they, that they.
That's probably why the crew.
Made accommodations.
That's what I think.
When do we ever get accommodations?
Um, all I know is, I've got this, and Marjorie, I think, is on that from. Um, Island Institute, a couple guys, and they were gonna try to. Step in and help, I mean, sometimes it can be helpful, talking to the state, um, versus.
I mean, that's why we reached out to our representative, that's what they're supposed to do is.
Right.
Yeah, is.
But I don't know that.
We never got a response.
Right, I was gonna ask you, have you ever heard about?
No, I got that first one, but that was.
That's what their job is, is to get on the phone to these type of people and. See what the problem is, and that's not happening, so I think we need to bark a little louder and up the chain a little higher.
Yes, we do.
And who is that then?
I mean, we either try to get a hold of, I, I don't know if we can do that ourselves, or the commissioner of the D O T.
And if anger is probably the best way that, the best person to get a hold of.
I mean, everyone that I've talked to has recommended, and people that I've talked to in the, the ferry service have said, we need to talk to the. Commissioner of the D O T, I've talked to. Probably six or seven different employees there, and they all recommended that.
But it probably should be all the islands, not just Final Haven, they're kissing both.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like, we're, we're getting the, the brunt of it, cause we've got two boats, but we're not the only island that's had these disruptions, so.
Be more affected with.
Isles Wells, ha- had them.
Swan's Island.
Um, yeah, Swan's, Swan's Island did for a day or two.
Yeah, see, got our boat. Right, yeah, they don't suffer too much.
No, they don't.
Inconvenience. But anyway, I don't know what, I don't know, I'm out of ideas.
Crew shortage cancellations.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm out of ideas, I don't, I don't know what you do, keep writing letters, I guess.
Marjorie would, you contacting, I know you're busy, but uh, but was it a memo for the other town managers involved? See what their thoughts are about getting together, coming as a, as a group instead of us as an individual island.
I mean, I don't have any objection, I know, you know, Sonny down in Swans, he calls me all the time, I know Janet and Alsboro.
And North Haven.
Rick, and Worth Haven.
I mean, should we talk to Alan too, and get Alan? Yeah, yeah, I'm, uh, I mean, that's a part of his. His job too, but I know he's, he's good, but.
He needs help, yeah.
Who is that? The famous person, I'm a Tinicas, and I can't, like, alright. Sorry, I couldn't bring it to my. Alright. That's all, right, Swans?
Maybe we should just write a, have a form letter and just send it out every once in a while.
I'll see what I can do, I mean, I, I'm discouraged, really, I, you know, I feel like. It doesn't seem to matter what we say or do, or who we talk to, or, you know, they just, they just seem to brush us off.
But we hadn't been very high in the chain yet either, we tried, but we haven't gotten there, so.
Okay.
Alrighty, one of our favorite things, budget workshop.
So, I mean, I think things are looking pretty good overall. The school was up. Two point five five, I believe. Oh, so their budget is up. If you wanna go to the end, the last page. Or the second to the last page, the municipal budget right now is only up less than, um. Less than a percent. One percent or less. The school is. is two point, I have two point nine seven increase from last year. The county is way up, that's sixteen percent increase. But overall, it's, it's a pretty flat in terms of increase, it's like point five five overall compared to last year. Um. The things that still, the budget committee has been through mostly everything. So I'll have to make an adjustment on, on the second page, law enforcement lodging based on the contract amount that, um. The ambulance budget, bungee, you know, a little bungee, ambulance budget. Um, the budget committee is still looking at, we're looking at to try to incentivize, um rather than having an on-call program, going to a per diem program. Uh, the problem we're having is getting people to sign up for a shift to be on call and, um the amount of money that they get just to stay close and, you know, stay sober. And, you know, be available isn't, um, beneficial to them. So going to a per diem instead of the on-call wage. It's just, uh, and um, Ryan has been coming to our budget meetings, but we haven't really the budget committee and the, uh, ambulance director haven't really pinned down what we think is the best way to go. So we're not really, I mean, that's really the only line that we're still working on. The rest of the budget is fine. Um, so that's still a contingency. But, you know, I have another budget committee meeting this week, I think it's Wednesday. So we're still working on that. Um, based on wages, I mean, I put an amount in there for social security and Medicare, but obviously if the wages uh adjust, then I have to adjust that line. Uh, and then, you know, the capital project lines, the budget committee has approved what I have in there. I don't know if you wanna go through that. You know, look at that, how closely you wanna look at it. Um.
How far are we away away from the final budget coming out of the budget committee, do you think? One, two weeks?
Oh, I think this will be our last meeting. I mean, this is pretty close to being final.
Why don't, what I would like to see is this group get together without any other meetings, just to go over the budget. Just there and just make sure we're all understand it and, and, and okay with it. Then just do a sign up at that point. Rather than trying to rush through and feel.
Yeah, whatever you wanna do is fine with me.
That would be, I don't have the time to do it that way rather than feeling rushed. But I looked at it, it looks good, but it'd be good to get before we sign off that we know what's there.
Oh, I, I mean, the sign off will be when we, when I create the warrant and you will approve the, and sign the warrant.
But I, I, but I think it'd be good to just review it first.
Not, you know, so I do have a budget meeting at three thirty on Wednesday. So I'm open to having another meeting. Whenever you would like to.
I could follow up right, right behind it, whatever.
What time is the meeting?
I have a budget committee meeting at three thirty. We usually go until, uh, five thirty, a couple hours. I don't, and I don't, we don't have that much to discuss, so.
Are you saying meet tomorrow after the meeting?
Don't you have to notice that?
I have.
Yeah, that's right.
I have, I have too many ma- meetings this week. I can't add another.
The other week going on this week, cause skip the least a week.
Yeah, um, and it has to be posted too.
You wanna do it next Tuesday? Wednesday? No, the Wednesday is the budget again.
I can't do Wednesday, I can't do Thursday. I can't do Monday. I have a meeting on Monday. I'm away Wednesday, Thursday.
Tuesday the seventh? I held up a calendar for your.
Thank you.
What's the date, Marjorie, you just said?
The seventh? Next Tuesday?
What time? Five?
Can we do it earlier?
Whatever.
Tuesday at four?
How much earlier?
Two, one?
No, I, I gotta work, so. How much earlier?
I think four o'clock would be good. It shouldn't take us long to go.
No, I think an hour, we could probably do it.
Is that a consensus?
That's fine by me.
I guess so. Just make sure I don't. Figure it out. Good.
What's that?
It said show up when you can.
So can you save these?
Yep.
Then she just shows the revenue, where the revenue is gonna come from.
You don't always depend on the end. You don't always depend on the end.
Please save them.
Well, this is fine.
I'll leave it in the car.
And if there's any other detail, if there's any other detailed information that you'd like, then let me know.
I'm sure you can answer what.
I have a whole book of information.
I know, it's, it's a whole different.
Hey, well said here, uh, move on to report of town manager.
Uh, I don't have anything else. Unless you have any questions, um. Um, that was Donald's. Oh, we sent out, um, I was gonna tell you about that. We sent out seven foreclosure notices because of unpaid sewer liens. So we're in the process of dealing with that. Some of them have mortgages and normally if there's a mortgage company, the mortgage company will pay it off because they don't want the town to get it. The town um, liens would take precedent over the mortgage company. Um, so we're just working through that. They have thirty days to pay or we foreclose on the property, so. I don't, I don't have anything else. Won't you have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions. Do you wanna think about the annual town meeting dates?
Can we do report of members first?
You sure can.
Excuse me, Madam Jean.
Report of members, please. Make it short.
Well, I think one of the things that I wanted to bring up is Peter and I visited the town property up at the, uh, what do you wanna call it? Well, loud pit, but you have another name for it now, the, the, uh. Yeah, okay. And it's about two acres. And there's well water there and there's may or may not be a suitable sewer connection, but Millie's got some information and I really haven't gone through that yet, but it looks like a pretty good site, would you say, Peter, based on what you've seen? So the question is, would, would that be something that, uh, the board would approve of if we go ahead and look at if, assuming we get a pop up positive feedback in the town. Is, would we be able to put a building on that property? Uh, I don't think there's any restrictions, but I don't know of that yet.
I mean, my opinion is let's wait and see how that this town vote goes, because it might be a
I was gonna say, before we do though, I may finish on this, is if we, I think it'd be worthwhile sort of question this out, what it would take, what the cost would be if we actually did get a modular home or a double wide on that property with a slab.
Millie, how much of that property is being used?
Um, I'm not sure about where he, we're looking. Like to look at it.
The piece that we did bought for the, I'm sorry to put my back here. This is the piece that's talking about.
This is, is this, uh, this is our lay down area right here. This is where all of our dirt piles are. All of that, right? That's not wooded area that you were looking at then?
Uh, is that map I must bit that I got a little screwed up looking at it for north and south and whatever. The, the wells down here.
This is well. This is our lay down area.
Okay, we're talking um I think it's a syrup it here, I think, but I, but I can't, north is which way here? Right here? Okay, so that would be, okay, so that, that's right up in this area picking here. There's, there's nothing through here though, is there?
This is, no, this is a road that goes to Billy's stuff. And this is a road that goes to Billy's stuff and this goes to Billy's.
Hey, we're up in here.
Yeah, um. I mean, my thought was when, when he mentioned that, uh,
I'm I'm not one hundred percent certain, but I think the first hull would be to Amcha because um, I'm not sure that you can put a livable dwelling in a like in a scrap of pit. Where there's blasting and rock crushing and.
Question was, would it be able to do it?
And, uh, my second concern would be a family living so close to areas where all the equipment is going and, I mean, Billy one has several rock trucks going through settings, um, all of the towns. Um, people come up through there with their dump trucks to get loaded and, uh, we, we run our trucks back and forth through there.
I'm not sure we're in the same area. I, I think.
No, we are.
Yeah, I know, we want that property extensively when, um, we were gonna purchase it.
It's right next to our salt shed.
I, I disagree with Dawn, but I don't think it's a proper environment for a home, yeah, I agree.
Um, I, I think the intent is really great, you know, I mean, every little, everything helps. And, and I, I think I've said this to everybody in this room before, when it comes to housing, yes, and is what we have to be saying all the time. But I think maybe you already have an entity in the town that's, that's working on um, land use planning and with housing specifically, um, I spoke with Dylan earlier this week. And the housing initiative, that's, that's all they're thinking about is, is every inch of this island and how how, you know, some places are appropriate for housing and some places aren't. And maybe this would be a really great opportunity for the town and the housing initiative to work together.
But anyway, in the meantime, thank you. That's not a bad idea.
Yes, and.
And, yes, and, but in the meantime, I, I disagree with what Dawn's proposing for up there and that's my opinion on that. I just think it's not a good idea. And that property is especially purchased specifically for town garage, public works, and if they needed more space for some, uh, whatever reason and then, oh, no, we can't because we've used it for housing. I just think we need to be cautious on, on what we do, where we go.
We're already looking for, or looking at, if you recall, a couple of comics boxes to, for when we can't use down there for storage, not factory storage anymore. You know, we still have equipment that needs to be undercover that we're gonna have to deal with at some point.
I, I just think let's see if we get approved to do anything. And then I agree, talk to the, uh, standable housing or whatever, you know, the committee and.
Yeah, three years from now, we'll probably have a voice.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Well, it depends on what happens with the, um, the vote town meeting.
I've talked about the housing stuff. I don't see them moving very fast.
The housing.
Committee.
Special town meeting first, so.
But let's see what happens.
Well, I think, yeah, and I was just trying to develop a cost, just a cost model to see what it would take to do something up there as an option, because I think you're looking at probably three hundred and fifty thousand. But with a double wide up there versus uh, five hundred thousand, you, you'll see what houses are going for. They are cheap and they're not gonna get any cheaper.
We have a lot of land on that we should be looking at too. The town owns land, a lot of land and.
Well, we had, um, originally talked about putting, going up behind the, um, airport house up on the top there. That's a beautiful piece of property for, for a home. And we've talked about putting the town garage up.
And that's already lauded, that already lauded into house laws, but once again, let's see how the special town.
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying, we're just discussing possible places of the, you know, that the town could utilize, right?
Numbers first, so you know what, 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 look at the numbers.
What's that?
And I don't have anything to report.
I don't have anything.
Okay, Marjorie, did you, you were gonna add something. I felt you wanted to say something in this to end the conversation.
No, I just, uh, to Lad's point, wait until after this special town meeting, I'm, um, I mean, I've had three people calling me with potential, um, places that either are multi-unit or potentially multi-unit, you know, that they but they just, they don't want the information out there. Um, anyway. Just wait till after the special town meeting to pursue anything, I guess.
Yeah.
Do we have a date for that?
That is, um, May fourteenth at five P M.
Our next meeting.
Meeting, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is that what you wanted to talk about?
No, annual town meeting. I know it's a ways away.
No, it isn't, because we have to reserve the auditorium.
So, uh, graduation is the fifteenth.
Why don't we have it during graduation?
Captive audience. Um, Darlene is out the next week, so looking at the last week in June. Twenty, I don't know, I don't really remember if we have a set day we do it on, Wednesday?
It seemed like we did it on Wednesday.
I feel like it's a Wednesday. The last week.
Yep, that June twenty-sixth. You've already written it in pen.
That's not a good sign.
What time?
Uh, it's up to you guys.
Annual town, it's on the twenty-sixth, you said? June twenty-sixth.
Um, don't, don't we usually start at six?
I would, that's what popped into my head, but at six? Okay, I'll work on, uh, the paper for the auditorium.
So our next meeting is the fourteenth.
Correct, with the.
Special town meeting, right. Um, and then the annual town meeting is the twenty-sixth of June.
Correct.
At six. All right, got it. Now I don't lose my phone. Okay, so. Anything else? Somebody else up in the motion to adjourn?
Sure you can.
So you're all set then? Okay. Yes.